Well, good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Please let a minute show that all of the council is in attendance as well as our department managers. CAO. Do we have anyone online right now? Item three is approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be accepted as presented. Second up.
The motion has been put forth and seconded. Any question on that? If not, all those in favor, I'll follow.
Okay.
Those opposed, name? Motion carried. Item four, disclosure of conflict of interest. You're in there, we'll move forward. Item five, musical report. Item five, one is the financial report, as you're talking.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening. And we have, I added a second page to the financial report for year end just to give you a different look at the expenses in particular, broken up by category overall. So it might give you a little bit better view of how to look at things. But just as a general synopsis under our general government, in December, we received our fifth grant or our community investment fund grant for $5,583 for the windows for the tourist bureau and also $783 for the panel. We received $3,800 in interest revenue accounts and out of that, 111 went back in bank fees for the transfers and our manual fee for our visa. So we did do some donations, $250 to Heartland helpers and $275 for advertising and religious man. For the year, our general revenue is, or our general government or town hall and its group or administration is over, our revenue is over $45,830 and our expenses are under 44, 287. So the major contributors to what you see there is, of course, we had $35,000 in interest revenue. We received an amalgamation grant at the beginning of the year for about five grand. And we are over our budget of, I think, permits by $4,875. And the biggest single savings that we had in our expenses were in our wages. So that was the same contributed to what you're seeing there for general government. Under protective services, overall for the year, $20,996 under budget. So 6,300 of this is actually from the EMO training and by law enforcement budgets that we had. The remaining difference is in the fire budget and mainly due to savings in payroll allocation. So basically, we had over allocated on our budget for payroll costs for the fire from administration. Everything. The actual spend for the fire department came on budget even with, they had to spend $56,000 this year on hats in 2023. So we're hoping that next year in 2024, we'll need less of those for sure. Transportation or the public works department, in December, the 2007 International was put back into service. We spent nearly $13,000 on this vehicle this year and it still does not have a workable shelter. Overall, this department came in $21,000 over budget. The major contributors to this, one being the 2007 International budget, but it did cost quite that much. We only budgeted $9,500 for patching. We spent $37,600. Now, this line item has been increased for 2024 and our priorities for 2024 need to be identified soon. Environmental help, this one we've talked about all year long. It did come in $31,546 over budget. The biggest reasons for that, we have noted all along, there was a $20,000 error in the budget for Heartland and the fuel surcharge that got picked up during the year. So for 2024, we negotiated our contract for 2024 through 2028 for collection. The biggest thing yet to learn will be for our disposal side because we have some new areas that are going to have bulky pickups in 2024. We have some areas that are going to decrease one pickup. But overall, that's an increase, so we have to see how that is going to affect us, but we have budgeted for it. Environmental development for 2023, $34,000 under budget. Biggest contributors here, we received more in grants than we had anticipated and revenue from the tourist bureau and our savings, of course, were through payroll. Recreation, that's the big one. Over $32,000 in budget for 2023. Now, we did bring in extra revenues, 114,300 in revenue, 31,000 more than the average of our previous five years. So that is something positive for sure out of the recreation budget. But our expenses were $88,000 over budget. Now that we identified that going into our 2024 budget, along with our current recreation facility, we also know that we've got a new one coming our way. So we have increased our 2024 expense budget by $256,000. Recreation represents 40% of our 2024 payroll. Expenses over budget for 2023, $11,000 for pool maintenance, $16,000 for ice maintenance, $20,000 for power, $7,500 over on program costs and $29,000 in wages and benefits. After all of this, we are still trending for a $20,000 to $25,000 surplus. Year end is not done yet, so there will be some shifting and sharing that is done at year end for sure between our general budget and our water and sewer budget and we'll see how some of those allocations affect us. For the utility fund, oh, $20,000 to $25,000 surplus, energy fund with $75,000 transferred to our capital reserve and $10,883 into our operating reserve. So that is important to note. For the utility fund, we are looking at a small circus. Can with 12,500 transferred to our capital reserve and you have a word for on all of the pluses and minuses for the utility operating budget. That was included in your package. So our banking position, we had talked a little bit about this in the fire meeting that we had. And you'll see that overall now when we look at our banking position, it's getting a little bit closer to zero again, although it's not even close. 140,166 is our overall banking total. But we now have reserves to add to that that we didn't have before. So again, when you add our $272,000 in reserves, we have a very same, it's confused. Very positive bank balance, more so than we did a year ago. Some additional things, we received our work safe and B rating for 2024 and we are down five cents. So we were 220,100, now we're down to 215. We received our breakdown for our insurance bill for 2024 just this week. Our agent is about the same age in municipal work as I am. So between the two of us, we're spending some time going through line items by line item and looking at things that are happening to us. And currently, one of the biggest things that we want to look at, that's about a $2,000 a year bill for us, is what is happening on our contents and equipment. So contents and equipment in the insurance world does not include rolling stock or vehicles per se. So we're looking at our public works inventory, our recreational inventory and our fire witness that we have. Those are all separate line items that we pay separate dollars for insurance. And in her words, it had been a while since it was looked at. And she had nothing to back up basically where those numbers were trending, whether they should be up, whether they should be down, but it's close to $2 million that we're looking at in inventory, supplies and non-rolling stock. So we'll be looking at that a little bit further as we go through into 2024. We also received our gas tests draft for 2024. And there are three scenarios that they're suggesting and you had to complete which scenario you wanted to opt under. They are based on, scenario one is 94% of the funds are based on per capita. So mostly about population, scenario two is 80% based on population and it's 80% of funds per capita to free reforms. And then scenario three was 47% of per capita proportional to percentage of municipal road ownership. So the funds for Heartland represented 233,000, down as low as 166,000. So we, of course, have opted as a draft, so we'll see where this goes, for the option that base gives us our funds based on our new population, which is equates to a draft amount of $233,731. And we have 11,415 left over from last year. So if that comes to fruition, we will have $245,000 in CBF funding available to us for 2024.
How's that compared to last year compared?
So last year, we had 114 for the top up for the LSDs and about 74. So it's roughly about $40,000.
And your gain and your workers comp, where'd that come from?
So of course, with workers comp, it's just based on our claim history and we only had like $3,400 in claims over the last three years.
Oh, that's been trending down for the last number of years.
It does.
Any questions for Sarah Lynn?
Last page.
Yep.
Legal and accounting. Legal and accounting.
Legal.
The category.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes.
We didn't have anything budgeted?
Not in the water and sewer budget. No, no. But we do for this year, so. Yeah, it had all been put into the general budget, so, but it is split at year end.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Well done.
Yes. Okay, so move on to item five two, the CC CC budget. So Mike, can I steal the notes or are you going to speak to it?
Well, you go ahead.
Okay, so you can steal the notes.
I got notes rolled all over and everywhere.
That's all right. You can jump in then.
Don't tell them that.
You wanted to speak to that wrong question. Okay, so definitely we are seeing some trends where our complex budget has definitely tightened up. And when we presented this to the construction committee, yes, you have that side. Yesterday, Councilor Walton did want to have some more information on basically the shifts in the budget. So we, what we are finding is that there are some wild cards that have been identified. The general budget for sure, what's happening in the general, that's site inspections, that is oil for the keep the heat going up there, that's all kinds of different things for sure. That has been stealing a lot of our contingency fund just to keep that going. Included also in that, ooh, doo 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 doo. No, that's in site work, sorry. So the other white, the other wild card, big one is site works, which includes fat fill, excavation, parking lots, underground plumbing and electrical. And underground plumbing has been the biggest part of that and not sure exactly where that will end up. Those are the two items that are identified in yellow. One of the other ones that we didn't bring up at the construction committee meeting necessarily, of course, is our construction management and our design costs. Those, those have increased within the budget from the original contract. What actually remains to be seen from that is yet to be identified. We have added change orders of $80,000 to this budget, mainly in electrical plumbing and HVAC are the three things. We peeled out the items that you see in red and hopefully they came through in red on the copies that you received. Are items that have just been suggested by Jim Weston that we leave more to the end of the project to see how much money we actually have that's available. But some of those items are definitely, you know, things you like to have. Parking, the parking lot, the front facade of the building, your sports equipment, your kitchen equipment, your canteen, the infrared heating, whether or not that can be put in. It's still in the budget, but there's still, there is still 14% of the budget that is yet to be committed or spent. And with, out of that 17, $1.7 million, we are down to a contingency of $70,000. So now we only have about $70,000 that we can move around and play with unless one of these other line items happens not to come in as predicted or budgeted. So that's in a nutshell what I know.
I guess this is the time to discuss what we want to talk about in this. And, and the reason I wanted this brought up tonight, I wanted to look at this because when we were going over all this information the other day, well, it, it was fine and I didn't think that would be the place to be discussed anyway, like committee. So I wanted to get a little deep dive into this and find out exactly, you know, where we're over, why we're over. And, and so, you know, it's, it's like the site work. It's, we're over by $172,000. Where does that figure come from? You know, I mean, compared to the, the budget that we allowed for. Why have we got an increase of $172,000? I guess, has anybody got an answer? You know, I mean, I guess maybe you could rob probably more than anybody.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide for only a couple of notes. You may recall originally our budget was $175,000 and then we had $2 million bump from the problems. So the differential between that was really defended or explained, the reason rationale of problems is the increased costs. And we saw a significant increase in costs in the very, from the early days in some of the site work we did, the excavation. Then as we, charcoal came in about where there haven't been a tremendous, that stayed pretty tight to budget. Concrete work, on the other hand, was substantially over kind of every place we need to install concrete.
So let's just go back to that. Let's stop there. Concrete, okay. We had an engineer do up drawings for everything that was supposed to be done. Where was the fault of, of the cost of the additional concrete? If the drawings would have been right in the first place?
I, I wouldn't, I'm not trying to evade that question. I wouldn't be able to answer that. I can, I would say this, like if I take a step back, I can say one of the takeaways, and I think it is from structure for council, was that there really aren't many gratuitous investments or spends on the budget. In other words, we, we haven't taken elective spends and spent money yet. It's all core structural, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. None of the electric or add-ons or things we haven't spent money on. So to the extent to which, to Councilor Walton's point, the extent to which some of the evolving design has, and the length, the time it's taken to do design, some of the downstream impacts that are very quantified at the end of the day. They really, they really are tricky and, but I tend to speak and I'll say in non-scientific way, I don't think they really had, that's been a, has had a significant effect on the over, of overruns.
But that's where I want to get down to now.
Yeah.
On 88, 90, the engineering professional cost of both Brent Pearson and Brent Hatchery. You know, they, they budgeted 315,000, 355,000 and now one of them is over by 30,000 and the other one's over by 45,000. Why, why are we over in these areas?
So we're not over yet. So just so you know, this is what Jim Weston has suggested may happen. So with, so that we pump the budget from 315 to 345, from 355 to 400 in anticipation that this could happen to us.
Why? But I, I have a problem, I guess, myself personally, being on that committee and watching every week, the answer that I get out of them two chairs over here. I'm not satisfied with the fact that we're paying additional cost to either one of them for doing what they're supposed to do in the first place. And if, if a lot of the problems that we're having is engineering that isn't done on time and people every week chasing somebody to get this done. And not, not saying that he didn't do it correctly, I'm not saying that. But, but at the same time, I do have a problem with thinking that we're going to go over budget on either one of them areas. That's where I.
What the only comment, this has been an area that to some extent we may want to, you know, discuss carefully is that if the fact that the construction management side of it is more attributable to probably some of the slowness and the design change and some slowness in the engineering. So I'm trying to say they're not equivalent, the same that one, there's an A and a B and one, construction management a lot of times is, there's had to be more work because they had to fill in holes or, you know, address issues that weren't completely resolved by the design.
And I lost.
Yeah, so that's, to me, they're a little, that's a little different category. The issue of the design kind of is on its own and that's also not a simple thing to try and summarize. But I would say the construction management side of it, to the extent that they're in a stress beyond budget is, I think, more attributable not in and of itself or in and of their own work, but of the work they had to.
And I'm not saying that they can't defend by going over, but I guess giving a bill and not having justification of why we're going over is not suitable to me. And right now, at this point, we don't have the reasons why we may go over in the, in the, in those two areas. Okay, that's all I'm saying. I, I'm not saying that either one of them, I think they're doing a tremendous job, both of them. At the same time, it's like myself, if I bid a job on something and I unbid it, well, that's my tough luck. I still have to do the job. And then when it's done, I get the same amount of pay regardless of what I'd like to charge, but I can't because my quote said. And that's why, I guess, I want to be, I want council to be aware that as far as the council is concerned, when it comes to overages, somebody needs to explain why the overages are there. And, and that's no different for either one of them. And I made that very clear on Monday in our meeting when it comes to, it was the HVAC. You know, I mean, there's, as far as I'm concerned, there was mistakes made. And, you know, there was numbers just thrown around the room with $10,000 mistake. Well, I made it very clear that whoever made that mistake is going to be responsible for that mistake and not, not Heartland. And if it turns heads and they don't like to accept that fact, that's fine and dandy. But I don't have a problem telling them that. And I don't, and that's why I'm saying today, if somebody made a mistake, then they got to be responsible to fix that mistake at their cost, not ours. And that mistake has happened, so.
Is that the HVAC, HVAC change orders, $30,000?
No, 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 that's not that. But I'm just saying, there, there's a ventilation situation that we're into right now. And, and, and there's a, there's a change of order that could cost that too. They're throwing $10,000. We don't know what it is. It could be $2,500. We don't know that. But I'm just saying, there was a number thrown around and I made it very clear to the committee that as far as I was concerned, that we, we as the town or the Hartman, I don't feel that we're responsible to correct that problem, but this should have been corrected.
If there's been a mistake in design by the architect, is that where you're coming from? That if he made a mistake?
If that's where it is.
Then, then it's tough.
If that's where it goes to, and I'm, that's what I said, I, it don't really matter. You know, I mean, whose position that's in, whether it's the architect or somebody else, the installers or whatever. Wherever it falls, we agreed the other day, we want to correct it. Okay? That's what we done. It's going to be corrected, but the price tag needs to fall where it should and not where it wants to be or they want it to be.
I appreciate what you're saying. Rather than just blindly accept the numbers that are given to us, there, there needs to be explanation and accountability. So I think that's reasonable.
Yes. So, and, and we're just, you know, there's, there's, there's different things in here, you know, I mean, we're trying to do, you know, I mean, there's some situ, like scenario with the canteen that hopefully we can help them and get things and, and save some, the, or the, pardon, some money. There's different things that we're working on that will, and I didn't understand case work. What's case work?
So in my opinion, that would be sort of like mockboard on the bottom, like it's carpentry work is what I would understand it to be.
Okay, okay, I would, I would, I understand, so.
And it does say cabinets and vanities on one of these.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't see that on that.
But that's all right. We're looking at this.
Anyway, that's, that's my two cents work. I appreciate the work that you've done on this.
But back to the, yeah, so I can discuss what we need to have though. At what point does this council make these decisions that, you know, just example, we don't put the infrared heating in when we make that decision?
Well, I, I think what Jim Weston advised and what I would advise too is that I, I actually talked about just putting a lot of our elective spend in the column and parking.
Okay.
Until we're, we have understanding what the essential force cost and cost, and then we return to those.
Which is what we did at the beginning too. And then we, because we had a number of things that were set aside and then we moved them over into the budget. So there has been some of that happening too. And I can go back and include that from some of the previous budgets. But again, now it seems to be maybe we might have to pull some of that back out on the electric side and put it back in. But they're different things. The infrared is definitely.
Most definitely. And, and it's like our visit to Rishabakto two weeks ago. You know, and Jen and I both seeing the same thing down there in regards to flooring. That, that facility down there wouldn't have 35% of the flooring what we're thinking about up here. And it's a beautiful spot. It is. I don't, I didn't find nothing wrong with it. I don't think Rob did. John, yes? What? Yes, yeah, the ceiling. If, if, and we're beyond that point, we can't return on that, but we could. Yes, yeah, the ceiling. If it, and we're beyond that point, we can't return on that, but we could have if we would have probably visited earlier. We could have thought about that. But anyway, it's done. But there is some savings in that area there uh that we didn't think of before. So, you know, the visit was worth it, I guess.
We'll keep going. Thanks for the update.
Yeah, any other questions for Tina or for Councilman Walton?
I, I do have one, but I mean, so, and like my agenda, is this at the point where we talk about the fundraising side of the complex, or is that coming back later? Okay, so, does that, that also lead to some other side of this is cause that's another side of the budget, and I'm, um, and I, I guess, we need, we have a couple of things that are going on. We do still have our uh committee that does fundraising. Plus, we now have the barn committee that is meeting tomorrow night. And they're doing events for the closing of the old barn and the opening of the new barn. And to me, these are all fundraising opportunities. So, this is another piece of that puzzle because this budget assumes that there is nothing more coming to us. And the other side of this too is the interest dollars are going to start pumping our way quickly. If, more quickly than we thought, if we're not uh adding to the coffers. So, that discussion needs to get opened back up too.
Yeah, that, uh, to Tina, uh, is, I'm just looking at it and it's blind tight in there, two hundred and seventy-four thousand for closing the old one and opening the new. You know, I mean, maybe we better review that. We might be.
That's demolition too, probably.
Is it? I don't know. No, 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 no.
Oh, you're, you're looking.
Yes, no, yeah. No, demolition is in the sidebar.
Yes.
So, all we're talking about is the opening, closing. Maybe we, we may, but maybe we better look into whether there's a different way that we can do that, less than
But there's no budget.
Seven-four thousand.
Yeah.
How do they come up with that number?
I don't know. I don't know.
How's that number drive?
But I'm not sure where you're seeing that number money coming from.
It's in the.
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh, that's not what that's for.
Okay, you told me.
That is for George Greens.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, that's a pretty good, pretty nice.
Game Charles, yes, Game Charles.
That's been last week or two.
Do you feel better now?
I feel better now. I better look at the other one.
So, did you need to touch on anything else, Tina, or?
No, I just, I think that's gonna come up in questions that are in your agenda later, so.
We did see something down there. Maybe we could talk on that, uh, with that lead, which you see in a lot of open areas, but since you walked in the door down there, but on the right-hand side, was the uh potential for, you know, everybody that had donated to it and some real nice price tag there, a hundred thousand dollars, people had donated to it. And there's a wall there, what was that, twenty-five thousand, one of the, the silver ones?
I think the, the smaller plaques were, I think, just two fifty.
Right. I can't remember.
The larger ones, I think it started with a thousand, one hundred, ten thousand.
The center ones?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Down outside the Halifax and the Crosby Center down there, they got the same thing. They got a wall of donors and whoever donated, whatever.
You already got that on your agenda.
Yeah, there's lots of different ways to do it, and what type of festivals, have a bridge mural, and on the bridge would be plaques, but, you know, we've talked about all that things and and certainly don't feel, I mean, the fundraising community has done all, we've worked hard to get where we are. We're not gonna give up. Uh, hasn't there been some staying made probably? I mean, no, I'm not these more exhausted. I'm not these effort, but I think there needs to be re-inspiration and whatever ideas you have come. I mean, it don't feel for a minute that we haven't talked to people and and had spoken to people and asked people. I mean, for donations and for, you know, we have. Um, it's just that sometimes they're slow. And I mean, you know, there's some donors that that won't give over ten years, and which, I mean, I'm gonna say yes to, but it doesn't help today's money. Yeah, um, but you should have, so, I mean, there is a bleacher plaque sales, what we're gonna meet here soon enough, and that, you know, that'll be a hundred thousand dollars we're expecting. But it's all set up, uh, that'll help. And then, uh, yeah, it'll be the next thing. You had sent a nice email out about uh Scotia Bank and wanting to help us with the event. That's great. There's lots of different ways. Uh, it's just a matter of re-energizing, refocusing, and getting people who have the time. And I mean, no disrespect to any of the many members, but I'll call spade a spade. Everyone on that committee wears multiple hats in the group. And unfortunately, uh, that's not what they have, they're wearing, and getting their time is is somewhat difficult. And, you know, this has been a seven-year battle for some of them. Yeah, right, so certainly.
Seven here.
Well, I mean, since when is that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, so. So, I think that uh
Twenty-seven.
If you, you were rallying together, we'll, we'll, we'll get done with the budget, we'll get done unpaid for that. It's just a matter of.
But I think we can use this barn committee event as ways to actually have conversations with.
No, we're on our, on the fundraiser committee, we'll ever, everybody turn out for influence. We all want this, the question of the month.
Yeah, so, uh, this is, and we all gonna start on the getting solution, but um, the next newsletter could also move up, or it's here, which I promise, we're absolutely. That would be coming and honoring you.
That'd be a very good compliance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page two available.
You might get page one now.
It just makes life easy, Michelle.
Yeah, we just, you just.
We just built a Facebook, yeah.
Hey, Michelle, this is where you can just step back and sit there and say, where are you?
It's all right for you. You just have to.
Is there nothing further regarding the complex project? We will move on to item five-three. Uh, the Hartland area, C I O chart and task list.
Uh, so I, I, I just, I noticed here, I did not say that after M C R E C I O, that's saying for its responsibilities down there. Responsible, accountable, consultant, informed. It's an old uh model that organizations have used for decades to sort of identify, uh, to take roles and responsibilities and math them to um roles or named persons. And so, I didn't bring anything with me. I, I sent out a very long list. I didn't summarize. It was really um where council sort of asked about, you know, sort of the new, the org chart as it stands and as it's about to be, and uh, we'll be doing what I just wanted to share that so council could see that there's fair bit of work uh on that front and we're in the process internally of sorting that out. But, I mean, the basic, uh, the racing sort of just you know, again, identifies uh who is doing what. And the task list is a task list, but it shows you more, on first base, I liken it to a puzzle. First thing, putting puzzle together, putting all the pieces down on the table. Second thing, you're searching for edges. And then you start to form a puzzle. So, the year with all the projects and the record that worked for you, um, that task list is kind of that, slinging out all the puzzle pieces, and now we put dates to it, we put crimes to it, and start organizing, and we start with each, um, both collectively and individually focusing on what we have to do. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any question anyone have of it, but that's, uh, this was really for the information council to see that.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item six, business arising from prior meetings. And the first item is six-one, downtown water front project.
So, I, I'll, I'll probably uh hand some of this over to Michelle there, who's worked, uh, who's, this has been, uh, hurting his uh work, or in the summer, then he's supporting the background. But just to say what I provided here, I provided sort of a summary of his work that Michelle put together. And uh, about this one point two seven five million dollar project, which has several elements and goes over three uh, three years. And I guess, um, I would, and Michelle can add to this, but we're at a juncture where um we need to get some decisions made here, uh, we discussed in tonight. Ready for motion now, so we can move forward with funding agencies and submit proposals and working with consultants to get plans and so forth. So, what I've done is sort of um identified some of those issues for council on the bottom of page two. I know it's kind of small print, but anyway, it's in the bottom uh row with that. And I'd advise council, although there are some of these questions to work through, and they'll maybe have to add, you know, just.
Um, well, I can, did anybody, did you need me to review the, um, what is it, five pages? Uh, that I have provided council for backup? Do you want me to go through that, or did you get a chance to review it? Because basically, it's outlining um some concerns that C I O Warden had brought up, which he mentions issues for council there. Um, and some adjustments to the budget as a result of that. Um, but what would council prefer? Do you want me to read through my um, information that I've provided?
I've read through it.
I've read through it.
Yeah.
I did too.
Did you have any changes with the informa, or any questions rather with the, the items that I outlined?
Not a question. I thought the, like, the location of the playground.
Yeah.
What are, what's being recommended here?
So, I had understood, um, when I started this project, that the location proposed was the Pavilion Park. So, just below the Baptist Church where the, the newly constructed Pavilion is, that was where it was being suggested to have both the splash pad and the playground. Um, and I understood that there were private um donors that wanted to contribute to both of those projects. And then, um, but it's, it's being brought up, is that the right location for it, um, under the, the issues for council? Um, for various, and you can speak over.
Well, look, I mean, look, the, the points uh we make there are, you know, relatively straightforward in the sense that, uh, we obviously, um, if you look at the splash pad, we have a pool, and we'll soon beside that pool have a brand new complex. And um, the question becomes the one, we put a splash pad on Main Street, which means there'll be infrastructure work to do down uh, and to separate what the pool, we can splash pad right next to a Main Street, uh, which obviously has a lot of commercial traffic. And um, which could, you know, uh, bring safety concerns. And uh, so, and as for the playground, we, we do have a playground. And a similar question for the playground, the location of it being there. We have the playground now, playground area, again, next to our complex and our recreation area. Uh, does it make more sense to expand on or uh combine those to keep them separate? And obviously, in the space we have down in front of the Pavilion, anything you place in there like that, and this is not the entire, just say that other side will reduce the amount of space. You have the gardens, green space, in-stating room or seating room for concerts in front of on the Main Street side, if you will, the Pavilion. Um, regardless of what we do at the amphitheater. So, that's really the challenge. Um, there's advantages to putting it down on Main Street. There's advantages to uh putting it elsewhere. Uh, and that doesn't even get into question the cost, which of course, um, you know, there's expenditure related to both the playground and the um splash pad course. And splash pads in fact can be pretty expensive depending on how much you, how much you build. Uh, and if you're going to build, for example, a modest splash pad down on Main Street, doesn't make sense to put a very small, modest splash pad down there or to co-locate it with a pool. So, uh, not, I don't know that I, you know, I, I wouldn't.
I can speak on that. I've been about that. I mean, when the committee met as a whole and with some private lenders, the, the objection was the splash pad placed downtown, and we give tourists something to do and stay here. This has been a, a goal of this committee or this council. Why would someone want to stay in their downtown core? This is the purpose of the park. If we put the splash pad up by the recreation development, which obviously makes sense for the town folks, but for people coming in to explore the bridge and parking and getting everything, going for a walk up and down the street, you want to stay, they wouldn't notice there. So, the idea was to create more of a stay and play atmosphere with our Main Street. So, take advantage of our trails, take advantage of the playground for our tourist and our town folks. Not saying we don't want to lose the, the playground we have here. We want to keep it up, upgraded and even have a ball, ball fields there. A lot of kids cross play in the ball fields and play there. Um, this would be over and above to promote our downtown. That, that's the discussion that was had. And that's where private lenders would be more enticing to invest money in, because it's more, I mean, the town folks will use it down here as well as up there, but the tourists will also use it down there. And I mean, we talked about the street, the dangers of the streets. I mean, if you look at, although it's not commercial traffic, the Colorado, with, or not Colorado, but the, the, the extension, that's a busy road. There's a splash pad there. They have a little button, some, they just buy extra scrub. I mean, you can put a fence. You could do a lot of things to keep people encased. Um, that was the talk uh of the committee at the time, but we, we just, we discussed this. Now, again, this is council, this is the town's, so the town's plan. That, that's, that's the justification before they there and out there.
And the person that suggested that we have a splash, a splash pad are interested in having it downtown.
Absolutely.
I got twenty-five.
In addition to a playground or in place of?
No, it'd be.
Cause wasn't it started as a playground, garden, and pavilion?
The last park plan that we had, and I can get a copy, I should buy with me, uh, have both. So, and and again, it's, it's, it could be just one if that's all space permits, but I mean, it's, it certainly if there's room. The question would be usage. So, no disrespect to a, a large garden or floor arrangements, but if we're all about usage, what will be usable? And not saying we could have all, we just have to trim this or move this or change this, but, you know, I think that the the gazebo and the idea of conscious that can still happen was, I, I mean, how many hundreds, you're not gonna have to hear any people down there all the time, right? They'll still be room, but if you were down, look at the plan, I think the best thing, rather than talk blindly, is present a plan, maybe for the next meeting, and say, this is the actual measurements. It would make more, it'd be easier discussing this council, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, look, uh, some of the things you would, might think about is that, like, small splash pads and small playgrounds generally wouldn't be considered, they don't, maybe tourist attractions and since they're lighting. Eagle Drive is for May and Butterfield and Edmondson or somewhere in the past.
Let's compare an attraction to a visitor retention tool.
Right.
Right.
If you parked it on an ice cream with your kids and you're driving through and you see the bridge, you very well could, it's a hot day, walk up and play the splash pad for an hour and a half, play it over before you get prepared to go again. This isn't meant to be a Disney water park. It's meant to be a a place for fantasy style.
Is it true, though, just to present the counter, what it is, is not true that the vast majority of people visiting the bridge are middle-aged or?
No, older self, no. And when they're here going to, to say we have a splash pad, or then they're like, okay, well, we're gonna have dinner. Where can we eat here in Hartman? Well, we do, or. Red days or again, it's keeping people down in that core. And again, this, this is just one side of the conversation with me.
I think that we don't really know what it's gonna look like up here, because I don't think there's anybody offers in regards to what this new complex is gonna look like outside. You know, I mean, I haven't seen a lot of things on paper of where actually the playground's gonna be relocated, if it is apt to be, or whatever the case may be. And so, there's gonna be a playground there, and the pool's still over there, and, but all the stuff around it. Hey, there could be a splash pad up there too. We don't know.
Yeah, but you look at downtown Fetterton, they don't have any pool around their splash pad. If you go down by there in the summertime, it's packed full of people.
Yeah.
There's no pool, there's nothing else.
Go down to N B C C and
Right.
and uh, look at the one in Woodstock. It's always full of kids there during the summer, you know, I mean, from the downtown, and there's nothing out there.
So, one of the things, uh, though, when we had the conversation with Dylan, uh, about splash pads, so splash pads can be very expensive. One of the things that you have to consider with the splash pad as well is where the wastewater goes and what happens to it. And so, that's part of what they were going to look at is, you know, where do we get the water from? Where does the water go? What are the costs that are involved? So, again, we can't answer all of our questions until I think we have more answers for sure, uh, on even the. Uh, on even the feasibility of splash pad in that location.
I know exactly, there's a lot of variables, but fairness to that question, I mean, where would the wastewater go up here?
Well, it's definitely not as close to a river. We'll put it that way, for sure, cause that was one of the things that was identified, is just the location.
It's not, all these years I thought that there was a question for all those. Just to be honest.
Well, if you wanna be honest, I, I'm amazed that there's wastewater under the splash pad. I mean, it squirts up in the air, it goes back down, it squirts up again, where, where is it?
It's not recycled, she says it's probably on the side, it's probably fresh water.
It's funny.
It has to be.
Yeah, what's up?
It's funny.
Oh, so it isn't.
It would be all of our water.
Yeah, that's what I don't think it's.
What starts to recycle, it's freezing cold, all the.
Every time, so it's, it's all fresh, it's all, it's not recycled.
You say it is recycled.
No, unless they freeze it underground before they pour it back out.
You're the oldest kid to play.
Absolutely.
I seen you down there last summer.
Nothing bad, nothing better than a hot day to stand underneath that freezing cold water.
So really more information?
Uh, I think a park plan for that area didn't show the space, uh, the management group would help. And, uh, certainly they'll also give their advice on some of these limitations and questions and without the discussions too. Um, all I'll say is that there, there seems to be a lot more motivation. Obviously, to put it downtown, we're not by the facility, but I'll just leave it at that.
And I'm just, as a final comment, the original discussion by your committee to new chairs, well as people that have been involved in council. Had always been about enhancing what we have downtown so that people can stay on.
Which, which brings up the question that hasn't, that is not in here and that hasn't been mentioned here, so tonight, it hasn't been mentioned for a long time. To retain downtown core, I thought we talked at one time about the trailer park down there, and it's just, what's that, gone by the wayside?
Trailer park or campground?
Campground. Whatever you wanna call it, down on the flat.
Which part of the bird down below, uh.
In front of us, probably those.
Yeah.
Well, the issue one is the infrastructure would have to be removed, or I mean, I don't know how many thousands of people would have to be all over.
Infrastructure.
Power and water.
Down on the flat?
You're talking a ten site older?
I'm, I'm just talking someplace where someone to park a trailer for water and sewer, yeah.
You, you have, you see, there's an instructor, certain. And that would come saying, eh, seven. On that location, we're not saying there's another location that you, uh.
Well, if you, you're talking about the downtown core, I mean, that would be the ideal spot as far as I'm concerned, or something like that. And the mall down there.
If it could be. Service, service, yes.
I think this idea first came to council. It was because private citizens had come, talking to, um, to me and another member of our fall council. And that's where the discussion began, and they had a family member who lived out of town, come back to town. And didn't have a place to take their children to play, you know, downtown while they were, while they were visiting. And so that's from where this whole thing came, um, it was about downtown. And the vital, the vitalization and enhancing what we can offer. So that's where it came from, and so that's where it's.
Well, and it might go hand in hand with that, to your point about, you know, in. Maybe invitation for families to come stay for an afternoon, it would help if there's some ready kayaks or some riding bicycles for the loop trail. If they have multiple things for families to do, um, I, I think it would all go, it would all go together.
So will you bring forth the more information?
Yes, I'll, I will get the park plan.
We can make a more informed discussion.
Question, Michelle, what about the Beckett Gwimick Trail, what's that involved?
The Beckett Gwimick Trail loop was going from, get my bearings, from the Beckett Gwimick Park. Using the N B Trail and then going along the river.
So it's not.
Through the Charles Island.
Not going to go up the Gwimick to the New Arena?
The, the, what was in here, I'm trying to think of what that included, cause there were improvements at the Beckett Gwimick.
So currently the Beckett Trail Association does go along that Gwimick, put it back to Hells End, yeah, it does, we have ma- many different, you know, factors. What, what the idea of this was, is that if you go over here as a, as a reward, you could walk in front of our, from the front. Completely, you know, downtown, and then maybe walk to the Confederation, what do you call it, the walking trail in summer?
N B Trail.
N B Trail, the sidewalk, either one, we'll come back to our town, so the loop trail will be from like the Charles Island Park. Clear up, basically, in front, in front of the, underneath the cover bridge, in front of all the canteens, up the flat, and then back when we move.
So it's not going to involve going up to Gwimick though?
Well, it'll be attached, you go down here by Charles Island Park or the, uh.
Yeah, have you, have you, have you walked up recently? The last two, three years?
I believe it last year, I mean, it needs a lot of widening.
I guess that's where I was.
Yeah, no, no, for sure.
Is any, and, and is this funding going towards that?
This funding can be for down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is, is, is there any intentions to upgrade that trail?
There was already the assumption, Andrew Smith and people did widen the trail and worked on it a lot. Last year, maybe not last summer.
Oh, not last year.
I, I think.
I walked it last year and it's, it's deplorable.
Two of the bridges are out. Case, the, the biggest improvement being is the entrance. If you didn't have a gallon of this trail downtown, you'd never, back down by the. Yeah, you'd never know, you know, you wouldn't, cause there's no grand entrance, that's, it's all over there, right, so. And there's the volunteers along the, we'll get them revolved, but this new trail would hook to the back, that's why we called it the Gwimick.
So I, I may ask Michelle a question here. It seems then that, that what we propose here is largely widening back and wanting to move forward with. Therefore, we need someone to do a design project, and that's the next thing, I believe, or is that kind of big, big to fit there? And so there, originally there was a contact with a lender who had had experience working out with. And, uh, the Dylan's are kind of engineering, also done, has also done projects like this, so. Um, would council be comfortable with the town, uh, sort of, uh, look at those options internally and move forward with one or the other? Uh, to actually get this into, I'll call it a blueprint or more, isn't it?
The overall way of buying peace, superficial peace, while we get down underground. Didn't we discover that Regional Services Commission through urban planning would do that for us? Or by bringing that?
I tend to think it would be something we do more locally, that they may provide information, but we would be the ones that really.
Was there not discussion of R D C and funds available to help plans and bookings?
So R D C, yes, not the Regional Service Commission.
R D C said.
Alright, so R D C and ACOA, so that would be part of this, but we haven't been able to have the discussion because questions came up. So we had to put the brakes on it, um, and, but yeah, that would be the discussion to see. Because at this point, we honestly don't know if there is funding, there's been no advocate, you know what I mean? It's, it's just a concept at this point.
Question I have, I think your statement is correct, I think we do need a blueprint, and I, I would, uh, encourage council to accept that plan. The question is, how, how do we decide, in fairness, or how do you guys decide whether it's let him or Dylan? What, what would be your marks to pick one versus?
One of the factors would be that, um. The infrastructure work that we're looking at, it's, it's, if there's a design element to this project and there's infrastructure work in order to support that development. We would be going to Dylan for that infrastructure work in no, in every circumstance, right? That's, they're our town engineer, they know our infrastructure, et cetera. So then it's a matter of whether it makes more sense to have a third party interface with them or have Dylan interface with them in their own. At their own term resources, the resources they work with, or.
Is there a committee?
What's that?
Is there a committee right now that, uh, I know that there is somewhere, a committee that's involved in.
Is.
What this is supposed to look like or suggestions?
I bet we've had it up till Christmas.
Okay, so if Dylan could be involved with that, um.
Well, Dylan, I mean, and the only thing I'll ask is, is this, I mean, Dylan's obviously from an engineering perspective, very well respected. I mean, is this something that, it's much more than just infrastructure, I mean, when you're talking nature trails and, and, and boat docks and. And the, the, the vibe and the feel, and I'm just, you know, there's an artistic side of this plan, and then there's a, I'm gonna say you're. Interested in the plan of the, you know, but it's up to you, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I have faith in both, put it that way, but I just.
No, no, you're, I mean, there, you definitely need someone to at times touch, if you will, the, you know, on this project. The question is whether that's something, you know, we get to get through Dylan or whether we actually wanted to.
But we had talked about the environmental, that was involved in that, what happened with that discussion?
That is one.
They like that, that is the one that. I have faith in you, I'll, I'll, I'll leave you your trusty hands. Then we have to keep in mind too, the accessibility to our outer community, if we are using our gas tax. Our gas tax is to be used for something that benefits the entire town and community. So we need to think of that when we're thinking about where we're gonna put. The splash pad and the park and stuff, because if we are using gas tax, let's see, that's part of it, we gotta make sure that it's gonna be accessible. And centralized for everybody in the surrounding communities to use it as well.
Tina, Tina has the.
Between here and there is a margin of distance that would be, that would affect, you know, spurs.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking like if we're only doing it for tourism. Like if we're using it to keep tourists here, is that really benefiting the entire community? Or are we just using it for the downtown core, like we have to make sure.
I think it's too bold, I think, I think it still serves the citizens, um, for sure, but it's an added, it's an added bonus and attraction. You think you will, for those who are visiting.
The criteria around how the money's spent, Tina can speak more aptly to it, but there's key points of criteria. And how we use the money and where we use the money, and it has to have a high, a high impact on.
Density.
On density.
That was only for the top four twenty twenty three, so going forward into twenty twenty four, we have not been given any stipulation.
Okay.
Um, if we find to.
That's unlikely to change, though.
You have any comments, have anything to share regarding that?
I mean, if we had anybody interested in doing the, the kayak and canoe rentals, that's something that the tourist bureau. Wants to do, or is this gonna be a third party, have we even thought about that? Or is that just something that's.
Those were available in Bristol, Florence, Flaria, North Riverbank, it was ours private. Anything we can do to stimulate private sector investment would be a bonus.
Bristol, Bristol, actually, we're operating there, so they got funding, um, and bought bikes. And kayaks and paddle equipment, and, um, it was for the town to operate. Um, I'm not sure if that's a stipulation of the funding, cause otherwise you'd be giving it to. Somebody else to earn money off of, basically, but we do provide to students at the tourist bureau each year. Um, so it could be said that, you know, there could be some arrangement, like, we, we aren't far enough. Down that path to even know, um, you know, who to talk to or whether to talk to anybody until we know. What funding could be available or what funding is available for that matter.
And just to clarify through one, when you met with the C O A, R D C, Tourism. They were the ones that recommended this method where everything's bundled together?
This ticks a lot of boxes, um, of things that they're looking for.
Do you wanna just generally ten thousand feet highlight some of the things that are, that they're looking for?
Uh, they are looking for things to keep people longer, so experiences. Um, the guided tours, I think that is going to tick a box for them if we can make that happen. Um, the boat launch, they were, they were really interested, the trails. Like, a lot of the things that are in here, um, would be things that would, would tick the boxes. Um, and I think there's a lot of things, if we can get, if we can get some interest, get people staying longer. Things like that are going to, um, improve your economic development as well. Because businesses, it will encourage businesses to come here if they see an economic benefit. It's hard for restaurants to open, um, when. The, the tourists aren't here long enough, I, I mean, tourist season is short, you know, they've gotta make it all year round. But I, I think it's things like this, making these improvements, that you are going to see spinoffs. Though the reason why I suggested that the artisan market be in the courtyard. Um, one was because it was undercover for a portion of it, so your weather isn't a factor with the entire market. Uh, it gives a retail presence back to the courtyard, and maybe it will encourage some more retail, some cafes, some different things. To come in there because it has become a, a professional building, you know, for, for various reasons. Um, but yeah, I think there, I think there's a lot of components and, um, somebody had brought it up earlier as far as a splash pad and. Playground, those are things that if you get the right, uh, landscape architect and person working on that. They can come up with a design that makes it interesting for the public, so that, the traveling public. So that it's not just a community playground and splash pad, but something that does have a feel that it's. Part of our tourism package as well, so those are things that they would put the, the fine touches on, uh, to make those work.
And sort of to answer your question too, Sam, what we do with. If we use our C C B F or gas tax funding to leverage for more dollars. For this type of project, we are making better use of the taxpayers' dollars. At a whole, as a whole, to gain more for our community as a whole. And the more that we bring people here, they will generate revenues. That give more dollars for the people who live here. If, if it's a, it kind of built, it's a chicken in the egg type scenario that continues.
Momentum.
Yeah, it builds momentum, thank you, so. Also, we see it, it's using those dollars for more dollars. So that we get a bigger bang for our communal buck.
And I think to that, to that end, there can always be proposals from within the larger surround of where we wanna see things added. Just, you know, good ideas aren't turned away, they have to be put into, uh, a national process, just like this document Michelle's, uh, set up. That's when it takes some time to see something like that in, in pieces and parts, but I do think there's other areas in which we can keep and attract people, whether it's, uh. You know, you think of seasonal, with snow shooting and all kinds of things, that could be easily happening here. Um, there's lots of, there's lots of activities to do, we just have to have the foresight to see them in the being and. And, uh, so I, I feel like there'll be opportunities that do come, whether it's on the survival side or taking us out further into the coal stream or. Closer to Peel or wherever the case may be, we just have to be able to expand and, and create those opportunities. So we need ideas to come forward to from the community, so when we have interested, uh, constituents, they just need to reach out to us and. And they need to submit some plans, proposals and ideas.
And the other side of this is why we are thinking about this type of development, and we also have to keep in mind our modern sewer development projects. That we need to keep dollars for as well as, um, things like renovating the, the one oh five and the dollars. That we have to contribute to doing that, so if we're using our gas tax money to get these monies. It frees up other money that we can use for other things that we need to do. And again, development will build upon itself for the benefit of all if it's done right.
Any other comments for Michelle?
I do have another point, Rob had brought up, pardon me, um, C A O Weber had brought up. Uh, with regards to in the plan, if the original plan, it had mentioned, um, for the. Artisan market portion, um, to, uh, that the, um, concrete work. At the portyard was removed from that, so would you like to, to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, well, really, and I think for council to, I mean, this is council's right from decision. And I mean, my concern is just that in, in seeding the, the artisan market, uh, which I would, um, you know, strongly support. It's a question of where you put it and whether it's done in a neutral fashion, in which it could be located several places located in one. So I, I did have a concern that we were pre-defining or already deciding it was gonna be.
So I, I did have a concern that we were pre-defining or already deciding it was gonna be a particular location where it was. It's just for the consideration of council, whether you wanna go that direction, or you can imagine an RFP where you said, we're looking at creating a market, right? It's gonna need to have certain features that can be put, you know, several locations downtown, where would you like to sell it? And that's the, that's kind of the perspective I took on it, actually, well, is in light of, you know, um, being market, uh, and probably being areas that are private, and it'd make more sense to make that available for the ability other, you know, multiple people.
There, I'm picking, there's St. John, there's a, there's an open market with just a, a structure and a roof, where they bring their artisans. It looks like it's inside, but it's really not. There's a, there's a rooftop to it, and it's in between buildings. It's almost like it used to be a street concept, they've enclosed.
City market?
Maybe, uh, maybe I just, my mom.
Mostly built it for lunchers.
Okay, it may, well, I just, I just have a thought, you know, of, of there's things like that, that maybe there's an area that exists where you could do something like that.
Yeah, and whi- which is sort of, I mean, I think was part of the thinking that the courtyard, is that we have a structure like that, to make use of it. And then I, the point I just made is sort of there as well, but I think a city market, that, the ceiling is a hole in shit. That's why you have to look up.
A hole?
A hole in shit, yeah. I feel like I missed it. You have to look up to get there.
So council agrees that should be
That's fine.
Removed from the project, okay.
Any further discussion on the, uh, the downtown, the launch project? Now, maybe we'll move on to item six-two, which is the eclipse event.
I'll, I'll just start and then land over, and then there's nothing that's very involved in this, and, and, uh, we found there, and for, it's missing a few minutes, um. You know, I'm suggesting here is that, uh, it's a counter, sort of seeing clarity in how much funding and support to him should provide for the celebration, and I would add, and we'll back here, what I've tried to do, and there's your coffee, you can maybe add up, but I just extracted most of the lineages where you could say there's a scratching area or earmarks for many for various things, and the money could be drawn from not every one of them, but several places. Um, just showing that, but, uh, and as part of this, should the town itself start to plan and coordinate, be working volunteers, uh, official events before or after the eclipse? Then you could have, for example, something taking place at the pavilion or any number of other locations, and, uh, this is a month, third one is a minor, you know, just a bit of getting people with the minor, not a minor point, is that while we have the eclipse and we're, and Michelle's often commented, we are like in the dead center of the path, or many, many, councilor Smith said the same. Um, we have, so you could, for example, one of the things we could do is coordinate three or four people to take photos from different locations. Uh, you want people who had, with taken photos and had, you know, the sufficient equipment, and, you know, all cameras are now equipped, but maybe that we have, that's something closer to professional photographer, uh, at this. And, uh, one of the things inside, we're, you know, looking at building like a library of images, we're doing a wedge lane and platter and all kinds of things, and we promote them. Uh, so this is a perfect opportunity to sort of fetch some of that sort of photography. You think, I, I just randomly, you know, Bikinis, uh, TV school, doll, they're fully embarked, all good vantage points, something in the huge on Fleming, uh, et cetera. So that's kind of where I, but for us, um, for us to start to action this and, and, uh, start actively coordinating, go out, we need some direction from council, say yes, go do that, and here's how much you can spend, you're lucky to do it.
So Smith, would you like to?
Well, I, I certainly would before I get a total eclipse of my heart here. Um, we have been talking about this, you know, for probably six months, and we activated a, a small to examine some of the things that we could do. I, I do, uh, know, some people have got busier since we last met in November, early December. And we did activate, uh, one event, which was the, uh, stargazing event, and we would like to redo that. The gentleman that did have an offer to bring additional folks up and, uh, and redo an event either later February, early March. And, uh, so I think we will probably proceed down that road for that event. Um, reaching out to the committee members we had, and then, and then for our recreation and culture meeting, we did ask the same question, Rob, what, uh, what role should we be playing and how many events should we be planning? And the only other event that we had procured or secured an individual or event for was that weekend leading into the eclipse, uh, perhaps having a weekend celebration on that Saturday to get people pumped up for the, for the event. We had loosely talked before about uh, food vendors or some type of event happening on the bridge the day of, uh, or down around the front of the, uh, the town square. Um, if we think about the school, the only issue we run into is that we are yet to find out from the province exactly what time they will dismiss school. So having people, you know, crush into an area such as a school will be difficult if we don't know the time that buses and so on are leaving. All we know at this point in time, after, um, reaching out to the minister and deputy minister, is that, uh, school will be dismissed early. But there's been no confirmation of time, and I would take that to mean that it's not a half a day, it will probably be somewhere early afternoon around one to two o'clock PM. If it comes back at noon dismissal, that would be great, then you could decide at what point do you start to gather people in a location like the school? And the school was set up to be our alternate location to receive, um, the telemetry or the videography from the balloon that's being raised in, in force of Bristol area in support of, of, you know, places cloud coverage viewing the event. So as a viewing party, we did decide the school would be the location, we just don't have an exact time which we can encourage people to be there. So, uh, we were looking at downtown, up there, but we did not have, um, complete decision on what types of events that we would do. So, um, we do question ourselves, how much can we as, as a count, uh, council members be involved in all the planning? Um, we still have questions around how much do our, our local businesses or chamber of commerce have for information? And what are our businesses looking to do to promote or sell or make money from the event as well? So lots of unknown questions as of yet, but we did the one standing ask was what, what money can we have towards events that support either youth or adults or a combination of both, leading up to the actual, uh, the actual event itself.
And to your point about the, um, the viewing of the balloon, uh, launch and the, the images that it will show at the high school, um, Lawson Hunter had said that they're actually looking to start that livestream at two thirty in the afternoon. They were talking about, I know, they were talking about three o'clock originally, and then he said, you know, there's going to be some things happening on the ground beforehand that, that the group felt would be meaningful and interesting for people to be able to see. Uh, so he had said at our last eclipse meeting with the, uh, Western Valley Regional Service Commission that it would be starting at two thirty instead, because I did bring up to him that that could be problematic if the schools um, don't let the students go early, um, but he said, well, it's, it is what it is, kind of thing, so.
Well, and I, and I can do, it's a solid overcast and pouring down.
That's, the balloon is getting about that, so then you'd have more people presumably
Okay.
Attending the livestream, uh, but the other thing that was mentioned, you were saying about a viewing party location, uh, it was almost implied that probably you're going to want your viewing party to happen outside of your venue where your livestream is, because people may want to see some of each, that, you know, if it is a clear day, they may wanna see the footage of, um, that this telescope is bringing down from the balloon, and then they may wanna come outside to actually witness the total eclipse.
Is coordinating with any other communities? I just followed this, there's a lot of eclipse information on, of your HOU. And I think they're doing a really good job.
Hope we're just doing a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the, so, so the service commission have been, the meetings that I've been attending anyways, um, it's, it's all of our municipalities, um, throughout the Upper River Valley. Uh, different ones are planning, so I did mention in my, um, report, and I can kind of go through this if it's appropriate at this point, I can give you an update. Um, that the service commission, um, have acquired thirty-one thousand pairs of glasses, the solar eclipse glasses, and they are going to be distributing those to the municipalities based on, um, like eighty percent of our population, basically, is how they're, they're doing it.
So the test, the town of Hartland's not getting thirty-one thousand?
No, the town of Hartland will get about three thousand, probably, I'm guessing it's about eighty percent. Um, and so the schools are going to, and sort of back up the, so I'm picking the glasses up, uh, this coming Monday, and, um, I'll keep them here. The service commission is suggesting that all the municipalities should make them available at the same time, so there's less confusion about some getting them and people being concerned, they're not gonna get them and they'll go to a different municipality.
Um, is there a limit?
A limit on the number that you can, we should just be getting for you and your family, is, is what the, i- is what it should be. It should be for you and your family. And, um, the schools are going to be provided enough for the students and, I'm assuming, the teachers, um, or staff, I should say, um, but the students certainly would be getting them, and it sounds like those might not be distributed until the day of the eclipse, because there were concerns about them getting damaged.
So when are they, when are they gonna be available to a lot of people, harder?
So, like I had said, the March fourth, that was the date that the service commission was suggesting that it should be advertised for the public to be able to pick them up. Um, and that way, when you're enjoying the eclipse here in Heartland, you will have your solar eclipse glasses to be able to view it.
Am I wrong too, that if you take a picture with your phone, it could ruin your phone?
Um, I'm not sure if it's leading up, there was information, and did you guys get a copy of the little information sheet? So this information sheet was something that the service commission had done. Um, I actually moved it up so that we had a little banner front and back, so that we could put a flag in for the notification system, since everybody would be getting one of these sheets practically. And I also put a little blurb about the balloon launch, and so we can tweak this if we find out the details are a little different, but there is some information there. I wanna say there is something about, um, in the instructions for safe use of solar exposure viewers, maybe, there's something on here seems to me about using camera equipment. But they do say that you can take the glasses off once the sun is completely eclipsed, and you're just seeing the corona out around, um, out around the sun. Now, I used, there was the partial eclipse, and maybe it's different, but the partial eclipse two years ago, I wanna say, and, um, I used my cell phone and took pictures, and some of them, I put the, um, solar glasses up in front of it, I was taking them, and some of them I didn't, and my camera's still fine.
If you take them off, you're gonna be putting them back on again pretty quick.
If you what?
If you take them off during the corona, you won't be putting them back on, because it doesn't last all that long.
No, it'll be, we're in totality, we are going to have it for three minutes and twenty seconds. Uh, we'll be experiencing totality, so I mean, it's a fair, it's not like a glimpse. And it's the same thing as you're not supposed to just sit and stare at the sun, it's the same, same concept. But when the, the partial eclipse previously, so it was a couple of years ago, and I wanna say June tenth, um, honestly, if you didn't know it was happening, you wouldn't know it was happening. It didn't, it didn't get dark, but looking through the solar glasses, you could see the, the bite out of the corner of
That's partial.
Of the sun, yes, absolutely, yeah.
What day of the week is the eighth?
Monday.
So, sorry, I, I apologize, I was just gonna say that, the two things. The gentleman that spoke prepared and said, yes, you do need filters for your cameras and telescopes and all those things, because telescope in particular will, will enhance the light as it comes to the, you'll, you'll end up with some damage, so you have, and you can't just use sunglasses. You need to use the proper filter or the filtration paper. There's all kinds of boxes and things that we've made, and we're kids that you can still use. In addition to that, about what are we doing up and down the communities, we were, we were asked early on, when, when Bard started having some of the meetings for the region to, uh, for every community to try to work together and not have events on the exact same days, so that you could attract people to your event. Um, you know, and, and our community to the north actually has an event planned that evening, which probably will, will attract a lot of people in terms of, uh, local, an astronaut being there and so on, and, and a comedian and whatnot, so. Uh, our focus was not to do something grandiose on the same day for fear that you're already losing people to some of these other events, so, uh, anyways, that's to so, to your question, uh, councillor Faragre, we should be having an event that's different in its focus, so that you draw a different crowd in, and then support each other's events, because that was the end hope as well, that we all support each other's events up and down the valley to, to, uh, bolster tourism and, and, uh, for our local communities.
So, uh, I, this is, I'm honored, I mean, you can imagine event taking place around the pavilion, where we use the pavilion, being the slow projector we have, uh, right behind you, uh, could be home from pavilion if we had that ready thing. If not, you're just gonna be viewing it, and you could have, you know, somebody could bring a, um, group or two in, you can have drinks, some, maybe some of the food is provided by local vendors, some of it's for sale, some of it's, uh, offered for free in combination, we just, you have a gathering, be so just to happen before and after the eclipse. And it's nice open space, and it's, uh, one way in which we could maybe sort of introduce the pavilion to the camp.
Will it be cleared up at some year ago?
So, um, we can't livestream it to the pavilion. They asked us where we want, so Belle is setting it up, it's going to be a, a private, um, channel, if you will. So the, the, whether it's, it's probably not YouTube, however it is that they're streaming it, that link is not going to be made, uh, available to the public, is what I understand. And so we had to, in advance, a couple of months ago, tell them, um, tell Belle where we wanted it streamed to, and so the Hartland Community School was what was chosen, because there's already the audio visual equipment and everything there, um, and it was the right type of setup, so we had to, we had to do that in advance, so that's my understanding, is there's
There's screen shots.
Not, screen shots available, uh, and, and as long as you've got a picture, it's three o'clock in the afternoon, three thirty, and honestly, I don't know where in the sky that would be, but that's a big church next to it, so we'd have to make sure that the church isn't going to obstruct, um, which, it might not be an issue, I can't picture.
Sun's coming up over there, it's going down over there.
It makes him.
Yeah.
So, um.
You're a little scared.
So, yeah, so, so getting back to the eclipse glasses, so they will be, uh, the expected date that they'll be distributed or advertised for pickup is starting March fourth. Um, I've got a mention of it in the newsletter, we'll be doing posts on Facebook, on the website, uh, through the notification system, and for the newsletter, I'm trying to, um, aim to have it ready. Um, and if there's money in the budget to print it, we would be printing and distributing it by mid-March, so that really cuts my timeline back as far as moving stories around and adding stories and what on it, um. And it's not a matter of cut and paste, not that easy, uh, anyways, and so, so we will be putting that out, so I expect there will still be lots of glasses left, unless people are coming in and asking for fifty, I, I feel like we're not going to give that many out to one person. The intent is it's for them and their family, so that would be the, um, thing there. And then, um, we do have the information pamphlet that I mentioned, so the service commission had recommended that that be given out. Um, it was in color, honestly, it's a lot cheaper to do it in black and white, and there was a little color on it that I think it serves its purpose, um, and it makes it more affordable, and, um, so it would be, one of these would be given out with each batch of glasses that we're giving out for the family or whatever, so that'll cut back on that cost. Um, and, yeah, okay, and then I, so I mentioned about the other two, and then, so other municipalities are planning lots of things, including a vendor market, food, movie night, scavenger hunt, kids craft activities, um, and they're going to be asking restaurants to have eclipse specials for the weekend of April eighth. Now, I haven't done any of that here, because again, didn't know about budget, didn't know what we have the bandwidth to do. Um, so, yes.
Tumbrut potato chips may entertain an eclipse chip.
Yeah, we had spoken to them about that in Moonshine Creek as well, and.
Well, both, both companies were contacted early on in the fall by individuals in a committee and and there was some appetite. I don't know that uh there's been complete confirmation of either. But uh but it was lending itself to that to that effect and we hope to see many more businesses, you know, join in and um we talked about, you know, T-shirts that maybe we should have done and and maybe throw it on behalf of council, have some things in our local stores. But again, you have to have a uh, you know, idea of what we're willing to invest and see a return on. And use our local businesses for those items too, right, or the school.
And and I had reached out to, so the the service commission, um and honestly, I'm not sure how widespread this is, if it was service commission or night. Um, but they, there is a company out of Fredericton that is offering eclipse merchandise and it's branded with all of the municipalities in the River Valley. You can pick which one you want. Um, I have held off on advertising that um until I can get an idea if we have local suppliers that want to do that. So I have been in touch with Fine Line Designs, I believe is his company name. Um, and he said he hasn't had anybody inquire about it, so he wasn't planning to do anything. I checked with Cover Bridge Clothing and she might be interested in doing something. So like I said, I've held off on advertising for the other because I think we could probably support our own um businesses first.
They were missing a big, like total eclipse of the heart, but let me cross the future, I think.
So that's, so that's on the front page of the newsletter is um it's not on the front page, it's inside. It's an article um that refers to the total eclipse of the heartland. And I've provided, I've done the design for it and I've provided that to Cover Bridge Clothing and she might be interested in using that. So we've got some.
Bonnie Tyler and someone said we might get her cheaper than Chris Hadfield here. To do something for it.
Yes, I don't need to Google it now, do you?
You don't have to go.
No, um, I'm not sure if that was in his contract or whether there was an additional fee for it, but we've been told that that's not an option.
Two hundred dollars. So let let me give you an idea what what the additional costs are, cause I can share that with you. As a uh local school and feeder school system from curls north, we inquired to have an hour of individuals' time to share children and uh started out at thirty thousand dollars. And we got down to a a meager twenty thousand uh if we come up with the funding to have them speak to schoolchildren. So um, the question immediately then became, and who might you be live streaming this to? And uh the answer in the end is nobody. Uh, you'll have to see it in person. So there is fees associated with it that become, you know, very costly, uh thirty three dollars. Uh, I think we're at thirty, three hundred thirty three dollars per minute is what the cost is.
Yeah, if you have B tickets, they're two hundred dollars.
Now, the minimum wage goes up April first, does that factor in?
That's also April fool's day.
Yeah. But anyways, we did talk about doing some things, you know, council wise to do some promotion. I think the the least we could do is some T-shirts and start wearing them and promoting. And there's things you can utilize the school for here in town. I know that we were, reached out to the principal. They have classes in operation, have tools and equipment to ru- run T-shirts. They could probably do magnets, buttons, all kinds of paraphernalia you wanna have done. They need lead time for their students to be able to do that, but it would be fairly cost effective as well. And uh and then our local suppliers. So there's lots to do and and be involved. And I do think we should do a video perhaps.
Just remember, the next one comes around in two thousand seventy nine. So none of us are gonna be here. This is the only chance.
All that clean living down the dirt.
That's right. Have to be ninety one years old, come on now. But anyways, so there's, there are a number of things. We do need to have some decisions made on discretionary funding or or a pot of money allocated towards.
Do you have a number of what?
Well, I had a number of mine a couple of months ago, around three thousand dollars. It could be set aside, help get us started. Um, but I don't know what, you know, what every, that was when we were considering five hundred dollars an event, if we were gonna do something.
You're gonna do anything, you better do it quick. And get them to shine light.
I get so far on my looks and so far I haven't got very far on my looks. You don't make a decision. I used to get further, but that changed a long time ago. And so if we added, if we added some paraphernalia, we added, you know, like we're talking, you know, clothing, contacting some suppliers, u- utilizing the school. Um, if you, if you ask for food vendors, which we're running out of time to do so because they're going to be procured to other places. Um, most of them now are charging anywhere from three hundred or five hundred booking fee, if they want upfront. Um, we did consult, you know, and secure a band uh for an event on that Saturday. I don't know the total cost of the band, but uh there's things like that that we, you know, we said last time we'd have to sell tickets on. But which, again, if an unknown is, do we have money to do this and and secure for our community site? That's where Michelle would be and and I would be in in terms of any further movement.
When that originally came up, we didn't have events or budgets or anything attached to that number.
Well, what we, what we had proposed was a pro- in, we'd ran one event for months, which we intended to do. Benchmarking the school event, that was about five hundred dollars without me putting any expenses in that I incurred. And uh, you know, we figured it, the minimum would be five hundred dollars an event if you were just doing things like that. So that would have put us at twenty five hundred or three thousand dollars. Uh, and now I still think to to do, you know, a weekend event. Um, another session with some gentlemen from the production coming up uh to do that. We'd still be looking at twenty five hundred dollars, I would imagine quite easily. Um, but the bigger we go, the more we need. And so far, we haven't gone very big.
You was gonna bring forward motion on that at next meeting?
Yes.
We'll have more information by then um on some of the costs and some probably related to that.
Uh, no, I think uh if there's anybody out there that wants to throw a hand to some of this, I know it's not something four or five or six people can really do all on their own. But it would be nice to see, you know, I put forwards that weekend before and then the day of some some events, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I just want to point to the barn closing.
So um if you look at the agenda notes, I um I added in with the agenda. I have sort of a, I have one there, what's happening, when it's been five one and five eight. Uh, and essentially, um, the ice comes out at some point and there's sort of closeout events uh before the ace is taken in, then there's some closeout events after the ace is taken in. So um what, what I, what I summarize under five nine and the questions for council to address. How much funding will the barn committee receive from council for setting events, which are still, which are not defined yet, but uh are being defined actively by the barn committee, which includes several members of the council and then we'll do of staff. Um, another question, funds are raised through the barn closing event, should they go to offset the cost of of other closing events or cease and desist by the board handle? Um, and will barn and community members plan and manage closeout events? Will council staff then support the committee in the events? Um, that's more an operational question, but I assume it works that way, just for clarification, you didn't know. Uh, should barn committee members aim to raise net funds for the complex? So broadly speaking, they're trying to choose, it's ones to commemorate and celebrate and enjoy the memories of uh what you may have uh done in the past at the uh at the arena. And and also potentially to raise funds for the new complex uh that's happening and what's the balance of those two? So they're, you know, both, of course, are valid. Uh, the question is sort of going into this, what do we sort of explicitly agree on is sort of the purpose of the barn and closing events? Is it uh that we host meetings and we don't worry so much necessarily about trying to channel the funds raised through that to uh, you know, for uh, you know, the new complex?
Any indication at this point from the committee as to what level of funding they're looking at?
Uh, I think it's, it seems to be running along the same lines as the eclipse, if you will, probably twenty five hundred dollars ballpark is what they're looking at.
In November, we had that in mind, you know, somewhere's that ballpark. And uh Tracy had last month's meeting and that was still the underlying question, reading through the minutes of of uh the intentions, you know, from the many members. It would seem to me that between some student events or some youth events, some adult events, um, if you had food trucks, et cetera, again, all those things coming together, you're going to easily run into twenty five hundred dollars to look to secure things. If you're charging for some of these events, which many of them would, uh especially your your uh competitions, I think it's not fishes that are there, you have a a fee associated with them. Um, there was one suggestion of taking pictures of Zamboni and how many kids would want a picture on the Zamboni and how you market that and sell it. So I think that there, we will certainly recover any of the money we invest upfront and then still have proceeds to go to the the new complex as a result. But uh, but we definitely wanna have those celebrations. It's, you know, brings together sixty years of of a building that brought many people together in the community and some quite literally together in the bonds of marriage. So um there's going to be a lot of feelings and sentiment around around the uh, around the con- the closing of the barn. So, you know, I feel we should be, you know, telling the committee that, you know, the the cost upfront that we could easily slide over would be to have, start with a budget of three thousand dollars and and go from there. And maybe they won't exhaust that. But they've gotta have something to work with and their events have to be planned in the same timeline in which the eclipse does, so.
And I had not altogether arbitrarily sort of set uh set under uh twenty five eight, just that um thinking always of organizing these things is setting a date by which we sort of set the uh, set the scheduled events in stone. Or we established that'll be it, which will both help direct the uh barn raising committee sort of drive toward that. And uh will then allow time for Michelle and others to promote, advertise uh the events that they're taking place.
I'll be at the meeting tomorrow night, John.
I hope this isn't uh, but if, for example, we think if we invest essentially seed or fund it twenty five hundred dollars and will get more than twenty five hundred dollars back, we're of course really just letting the committee borrow money until six times it's comes back in town. So it's it's not necessarily spending twenty five hundred dollars if that's the way we structure the thinking now. It's just really giving them the money to set things up, pay for events and then funds come back and they're covered. The other, the other minor consideration is just that whatever we plan to do, uh keep in mind that we'll be doing the same thing uh five months later to celebrate the opening of the complex. So if we do events now, that we wanna maybe not repeat or repeat then, just to keep it in mind as we define those things.
Doctor, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
A a little bit, I mean, a lot of, I think what we can uh discuss, you know, be, you know, the the committee meetings and such, but in terms of is there any specific details on scheduling the best that we wanna kind of discuss now, a lot of elements here that would potentially quickly eat into that proposed budget? You know, you know, I just sort of kind of have it down on paper, cause like the eclipse is coming up quick. And if there's there's certain events that require licensing, perhaps, that's something we need to consider now, right? Um, and I would have to apply for it.
Yeah.
So um, that's what, I guess, if we want to have a little discussion now, so we can get rolling on it. Um, might be a good idea. So I I will say, I mean, I'm new to this, right? So you guys discussing some of these items, but I I haven't been able to.
What is the uh, what is, I don't know, I have to say the integral of the licensing, what we think. We're leaving in two weeks, so as long as you buy that time, we had maybe the most effective licensing is is a.
If you license the arena, you have to, you have to also provide security. Okay, I think when you have something licensed.
Yes.
Like people always talk about licensing upstairs in the pavilion. Well, if you license a pavilion, you have to have somebody third party apply for the license. You want that third party also has to provide security to have the liquor license approved. Cause we've looked into it for many gentlemen's tournaments, we've done up there, we've looked into it. And it's not just easy to apply for a license, license, there's a lot that's into it.
Thank you. That's, and that's my point. There's a lot.
The discussion at the last meeting that I was at, the finding security for, for those events that would be
So one thing, which is the thing is uh, thinking about me off like the Legion. We get that this summer for beer fair, but I think we had to, I wanna say it was twenty one days that was in the liquor commission. That the Legion was gonna have offsite liquor at the downtown door. So you might consider getting their involvement um where they have a license and they have trademark, our staff and.
So you're saying, just to clarify, so you're saying getting the Legion involved to actually run that particular?
The liquor portion of.
Okay.
Yeah, and uh might be a nice gesture too, because they have been a fairly big donor of our citizens. Um, you know, if they were to partake in that. I know it was a very seamless, you had to draw a map, a clay, a trouble bathrooms or what have you, but it's there, it's doable.
It's a lot easier for them to procure a license and it would be for a private citizen.
Yeah, yes.
But I have in the body of glory is the, and and beer, see, they'll give.
Yeah, yeah, maybe paying tax would be helpful. Um, and then another one that was um brought up, and I guess this would, you know, the uh, the confirmation of the uh the beer garden and the licensing would determine those is um portafodies. Right, we, so many of those, the uh question about portafodies and whether or not they'd be necessary. And I think that the the beer garden, beer carting would determine whether or not they would be necessary. Otherwise, the facilities at the beer couple would have been adequate. Um, but in that case, how many would we uh try and secure for an event like that? That is a good question.
There's a guy with the license itself as a guide, only you have to have an extra.
That's what I'm wondering, if you're trying to do this in April or March, if you're trying to do this in April or March, are we going to have a beer gardens inside? Because the ice still be in until.
There's a buffer, yeah, so there's two weekends, one weekend with the ice and I guess one weekend without. So I think, correct if I'm wrong, like I said, it's a product.
Those details we can announce.
Yeah, we're aiming to do it the weekend, not the ice event.
Right.
Yeah.
And the number of washrooms required, it depends on the the capacity of your building or the number of tickets you're selling, whichever it is. And for a licensed event, usually you do need to bring in portafodies because you need more washrooms or more toilets, I guess, than what's already included.
In here, there's a warning. Does that know with bottle lock? No, it's not, cause we've had to postpone bottle lock because the floor is not ready, cause there's still icy water.
Yep.
It's all, it's all a process.
Okay, so we'll get to you.
Just two weeks after.
Yeah, okay, so I, sure. Okay, so there's that. And then obviously looking into the requirements for people and uh people versus facilities for.
For example, one of the uh, one of the proposed events was to have a um Curled North and Harlem High School hockey game.
Yeah.
Where proceeds go towards new complex because the majority of the kids in both those teams that all play for Curled North hockey, which utilizes this facility. So um an event like that can generate a fair bit of money quite quickly. Uh, we did a special event for a family and donated the proceeds from the hockey game uh a week and a half ago. And uh and that was twenty five dollars for that, for that one event. So um something like that one will bring the money back really quickly to.
Yes.
So. So.
My fault. So we're aiming for that. That game to be on thirty first, ten days, the last day, the Sunday. It is, we have events turned into twenty nine and thirty.
Yeah, it has to be scheduled uh before either team have their season completed. Uh, so if one team went on to regionals or regionals. Uh so if one team went on to regionals or regionals, they're fine to keep playing.
Right.
But if you have a team that has ended their season as of, we'll say, the twenty-seventh of April. Or say the twenty-seventh of March, sorry, they can't play because of insurance reasons.
Right.
So that type of game has to get booked before either one of those two teams release their regular season.
Sure. Considered schedule events that we had developed a little. Kind of at the last meeting may have been tweaked a bit based on those dates.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you're speaking about that game, that's probably going to have to happen in November because your season's your season is wrapping up. If I'm not mistaken.
There's um anybody in the postseason for high school hockey will be definitely doing things after the March break, right? But if there are some teams that conceivably could be relatively close to being done at the end of February or at least the first week of March.
Okay, so in other words, well, I answered.
Which that, okay, it may well have to be.
And we're just talking. I mean, those those were kind of the two sticking points for me, the licensing and the responsibility based on how many people are going to have happy to be at.
Thank you.
So I think all the other information we can get at the committee's way forward and I can maybe be brought up to speed there. Uh with what you guys have in the mess and everything like that, right?
Yes, one of the members of the that committee is also a big part of the the British best.
Yes.
And so she has tons of connections and contacts and and is already prepared when she knows dates and all the restrictions, so.
Okay, okay, so I think those three points with the uh licensing and. Yeah, with some other requirements for that, I was pleased to remind you a question, so thank you.
Anyone have any other questions regarding the barn closing? Okay, now we'll move on to this.
So I have prepared a um summary of the Beltair project. And I will quickly zip through it because I understood that there were some questions on it. So hopefully this will answer where we are and where we're heading and how long it'll take us to get there. Uh so I have been having bi-weekly teams meetings with Blair Martin of Beltair Community Partners Inc. Um and the most recent one was last week on the twenty-fourth. So they're looking to construct a three-story apartment building with twenty rental units in it. Ten would be rent subsidized and ten would be at market rates. Nine are one-bedroom, nine two-bedroom and two studios. And so it would be located, this is what we spoke about earlier, uh located behind the former Rockland Road Imperial Oil Bulk Plant. Um and I provided a a diagram of it there to give you an ideas with lot C on that one. Um and it is on the same um PID as the community complex and pool currently. Uh the lot would need to be subdivided from the complex. And Beltair are working with the local surveyor to get the topographical data, which is the slopes and elevations throughout the property and the portion where they're looking to develop. Uh they have the drawings finalized for the proposed building. Uh I don't have a copy of them, I had asked for a copy of that, so we'll be getting those. Uh they are waiting for the town to determine the location of the street, water and sewer mains, so that they can create a site plan. Uh which would show the position of the building and the parking area on the lot, so um. CAO Weber and I are working on that, we've been talking with Dylan today actually. Um so that we can get them to start working on a solution. Um and a proposed drawing of where the water and sewer would go for that project.
Michelle, what is the question? Yes, um what will happen with the current park that we have there?
So where the so as you can see on this diagram, so there's been some changes maybe since the last time you'd seen it. Uh what we proposed to Dylan was, we said, okay, instead of it being a street that goes between the little park. And um the existing apartment buildings that are here, what if we just had the sewer main extend through there? Um and actually make the street go up further and have the street go through where the current arena sits. Basically, to connect on, and then that way it's not going to disrupt that park. Uh Dylan aren't sure if we have enough space to get in and service that sewer main if it was to go here. So they said it may still need to go up here, but that's part of their planning as they would come to um see if it's feasible. And if there's enough space to service um the sewer main, so. That it shouldn't have to move, the answer to your question is the park shouldn't have to move. Um and I mean, if there is a room here, the the proposed place would be up here um where the new road would go. If it's feasible for the road to go there.
Question.
Yes.
Mike, I see the water main is going to go across that piece of property up there. Is the is that okay for ledge?
Oh, I gotta be in it.
Gonna be in it?
Okay, on that side. Have to go to the lower side to get rid, get avoid the ledge.
So Michelle, and it looks like it may not have to be disturbed in any way.
It ideally, it would not be disturbed in any way, I mean.
I would like this, but I will speak to it. Uh so we've been outside three hundred fifty feet part, that part is not three hundred fifty feet long. So there might be some disturbance according to sewer in, but as far as servicing it, there would be nothing.
So you have a street up there next to the soccer field, right? Going across there? Would open up that that B area, the parking lot behind the arena, through the new facility?
Because that that's where the parking is proposed to be, so there was going to be a driveway going up through there. Um and because there can be funding for pre-construction costs. With regards to infrastructure being your roads, sewer and water. If we can include the street, which was originally going to be part of the parking that we would have had to build anyways. It helps um get some funding for something that was already going to be there.
The uh the green line that surrounds all that, that's the the uh property line?
Yes.
So everything within that green line, the town owns, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The green line that goes through, I'm just looking at the how it extends down from C uh toward Rockland Road.
Yes.
The town owns that little strip clear down behind the the garage there.
You're referring to this part here, so what was, I quickly, I quickly drew C and D in. And I think I may have addressed it, I just haven't made it to those sections yet. Uh but basically, this portion would actually get added to either lot C or lot D, depending on who would need it. Lot C may want that to move snow on to, you know, it's it's not going to be developable in quotes. Uh and the town would have no use for a remnant like that, so the reality is that that piece would actually be subdivided. It would be part of either the subdivision of lot C or the subdivision of lot D, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't still remain with the town at that point.
So C and D could utilize that.
Yes.
In some way.
C or D, it's got to be added to one or the other.
Yeah.
Um and so since we have a developer for lot C, they'll probably have the first sheet crack at it whether they wanted or whether it remains with lot D. But in order to subdivide this, we do have to have a road, further to your point, we have to, you can't subdivide land and not have it front. On a public street.
Yeah.
So that's why it would have to, if council wants C and D developed, you've got to have a street going past. The soccer field.
Yeah.
How would you get access to D again?
Yeah. Street.
There's a new street right here.
Yeah, it goes clear over to halfway across the D.
Look right above the water main there.
So the kind of on C would be access port of the D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yes, that's the extension, there's just so many layers happening there, so that little light patch is where the street.
You'd be able to go right to the end of the street and then turn on the D left.
Because those would be parking lots essentially, right? These both both lots, there'll be a building back in here presumably, and then you'd have parking out here.
That's going to be part of your access from when we came out of the extension.
Yes.
So um I guess another question would be, say if you developed uh D.
Yeah.
Should that sewer main go up further? Across the road, maybe halfway or so.
It it does, you just can't see it, you can barely see a line over top of where water, so it's water main is actually is.
That brown extends up past where you can.
Yeah, it extends over in front of the table, however, if we can't put the water over here. On the right-hand side of the property that's on Rockland Road, if it has to go on the other side of that property. Um we'd have to get Dylan to look at it and see, does that hamper development for lot D? If it comes into the middle of it and then goes sideways, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
And I don't know, just to extend this a little bit, we've also talked about that we haven't gone. To burning direction that this article development may become belt property and relocate the soccer field to um. The land down burning rivers and meeting them structures, getting in the tower position. I've always sort of field green ball field beside soccer field where the fence is the river. Uh but we got to figure out if that was doable, if it could make that an area.
Better get a gold retriever to get the soccer ball back.
The land is owned by, I didn't want to say what your land, that is owned by a party that expressed that they are open to considering. Having their land used for recreation areas with others up by the water and stuff.
Is there another, isn't there another soccer field up from that in relation to squeeze?
Yes.
So how much is that soccer field right there utilized?
All summer. Oh, it's used lots, but I'm saying there are other locations, there's lots within our name, there's.
It is.
Where we could put a second soccer.
Every night all summer.
It'd also be an opportunity to put a soccer field somewhere outside of there. But anyhow, uh so but that we and then becomes that becomes another good. And you can't see in this diagram, is up in the top right, there's another piece of land that down owns back there toward back month.
You want to keep your your soccer fields close close together and having been part of the Western Valley Soccer Association for many years. Um we used to use the old field down behind the the old high school as the uh seven on seven field. And uh you know, the town agreed to keep that mode and and reciprocity, fellows like me refereed soccer games for nothing. Um same thing with the high school field, there's a um reciprocity there as well from recreation to use that facility in the summertime. Uh so there, you know, you'd want to keep those close together so that when you're hosting multiple events. And that often happens in the high school games anyways, when they host regionals or they have tournaments for inspirational purposes. Having two fields close together with your porpoias or anything else that you use is nice to be able to have that localized. And otherwise you're spread too far apart, so something to think about.
Michelle, has this has this scenario gone into Dylan?
Dylan have looked at it and had said in principle it's doable, but they'd need to come and.
So you're just going back from them to.
Yeah, and Michelle said they need to move them in the home run and now it's a fair.
Um so then under infrastructure upgrades, so McLean Avenue needs to be extended. Um a new street would need to be created to connect with the community complex and lots C and D. Uh municipal sewer needs to be extended from McLean Avenue to lot C and D. Municipal water needs to be extended uh from Rockland Road to lots C and D. The details have been forwarded um to Dylan for their feedback on on feasibility. Uh of the water sewer and street extensions, and as I mentioned, it was just this afternoon. Um CAO Weber and I spoke with um the representative from Dylan who felt that on paper it looks like it would be doable. Um and so we're discussing next steps with them. Um. Yeah, once um once a feasible infrastructure plan is determined by Dylan, they would provide an estimate of the cost. Um and then an application could be submitted to RDC for funding once the infrastructure cost estimate is available. So we're kind of at that point, uh the representative from Dylan uh said this afternoon that he's going to reach out to RDC. To understand how that works to see if his planning can be included under the seventy-five percent um. Pre-construction and infrastructure fund that's available right now, or whether it's on the forty percent RDC. Um funding that would be available, so he's going to talk to them to um see what that looks like. And um so Dylan will get out to us on that. And then under funding, um so I've been talking with Beltair, um pardon me, Beltair and I have been talking to RDC. So we spoke to them in December and they confirmed it sounds like this project would qualify for that pre-construction and. A pre-construction and infrastructure fund, um which was created to spur rental housing development throughout New Brunswick. And the fund requires more than one developable lot be created, so that's why you're seeing lot D on there as well. There is no developer that I'm aware of that is interested in that, but honestly, we've never advertised it or anything at this point. Um and then uh funding, as I mentioned previously, cover seventy-five percent of the cost. To get municipal infrastructure ready for development, um engineering, tendering and construction of water, sewer and roads. Beltair have done um those applications for other projects, and so they're willing to spearhead that one, which is. Going to help us fight a bit on time there. Uh since it is the, since there's a second lot that would be available for future development, it would be reasonable for Beltair and the town. To split that remaining twenty-five percent cost. Uh CAO Weber is waiting to hear back on the federal housing accelerator fund application, which could be put towards our portion of the um. Twelve and a half percent, let's say, cost uh balance. And that would still leave us with lot D, which would be shovel-ready for another developer. So the next steps, um the first one is to draft an agreement. So um I've actually drafted um an agreement and councillor Weber is going to give his feedback. To me so that I can adjust it and send it to Beltair to review. Oh, sorry, CAO, it's passed my bets enough, guys, then.
Why to pay, why to pay that there, Rob?
Uh and then, yes, so then Beltair would be able to review it. And agree in principle to the terms of the graph draft agreement, um at which point Hartland Council. Um would then be able to approve the terms in an open meeting of council. And then we could have it um signed by both parties, so there's some uh a few steps in there that we have to go through. For design and development plan, um Hartland staff would uh confirm water and sewer access. And so we're on that stuff right now. Uh then Hartland staff would secure an agreement for the water and sewer access with that landowner. We're referring to the Rockland Road access for the water.
See if you can get that for a dollar.
And um Hartland staff to confirm street location, again, we've already sent that to Dylan for their their feedback. And then Dylan uh to confirm feasibility of the infrastructure design, so we're working our way through that one as well. Um funding, so Hartland staff with the help of Beltair would apply to pre-construction and infrastructure funding with RDC. And then um staff would determine availability of the housing and if um housing accelerator fund. For the subdivision plan, Dylan would complete the tentative subdivision plan in consultation with Beltair. Then Connor Tripp, who is our planning director with the service commission, um he would review the tentative subdivision plan. And once he's happy with it, then it could come to um Hartland Council to review and approve it. And that would include the pub the proposed public streets as well. And then um Hartland Council would need to rezone that property, so we'd have to go through the rezoning process. Um and so under the rezoning process, um we would with um Beltair. We would complete that rezoning application to either a mixed-use or multi-unit residential. Um either one of them would fit, really. And um then we would.
What's it zoned at right now?
It is zoned as, I want to say institutional, that's usually what government uses. Um and then we would res uh we would submit that zoning application and draft subdivision plan to the service commission. Um and once, once it's rezoned, then construction can start. Um, and once, once it's rezoned, then construction can start. But as you can see, there's a lot of steps to go through, there's infrastructure that's needed, um. Honestly, I don't know, the infrastructure could certainly be started this year, if not happen this year. But because of everything that has, because of all these steps, I really don't know that that construction of the apartment. Building can start in twenty twenty-four, because they have to have, they have to have a road before they can, before they're allowed to get issued a building permit.
Just start.
So, yeah, so I, I just wanted to make sure council understood, it's, it's, this isn't a quick process, there are a lot of moving parts on this. Um, so honestly, that's, that's my gut feeling, and, and Belt Air had suggested that in the last meeting, I, I actually had my years mixed up. Uh, forgetting that we're in twenty twenty-four already.
So, so I do have a question, in terms of the road use, since there's already a road that is accessible. I know it wouldn't be a permanent road for any apartment, but there is a road that goes in there that the public already used to gain access to the field and so on. Could that not be used for construction purposes?
It's not, it's not so much for construction purposes, and that road isn't wide enough for vehicles to meet one another, uh, as construction-sized vehicles. Uh, but no, in order to um, get a building permit on a lot, and in order to be able to subdivide a lot. It has to have public road access, and this is not a public road, it's going through private property. And honestly, I, there's no legal um, easement or right-of-way that either um, the planning director. Or I have been able to find on this property, so the answer would be no on that.
Never gonna be a public property, no, it's not, not that piece through there, but I just wondered even if the, the.
It's not just access, it's, it's that it needs to be a public one, is what the planning director's saying.
Is there any indication of what the ball in the hand said, length, be dollar-wise, seeing as we're. Okay, is there any indication how much, I mean, we would require in twenty twenty-four?
No, because we don't know the, the cost of it yet, so that's part of Dylan's process. They would go through that and they would have to include, so it's similar to the Rockland Road project, where Eric said we need to have a proposal that says. How much it's going to cost, we don't even have that on this.
The only reason I'm asking, if Dylan had given us, uh, when we were talking about our other water and sewer project, they had given us a rough estimate of one point two million dollars. So I was just wondering if there had been any indication of a rough estimate on this, okay? We'll go for you.
Questions for Michelle.
With regards to water and sewer, do we know how many meters we're looking at if we follow the pathway aligning the diagram?
Um. I can't. I can't remember.
Yeah, well, soccer, if the soccer field is fifty meters wide, it's a hundred meters long. And you'd have an adjacent, so he's right on the two fifty.
Three to four hundred.
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Only two fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, here.
And, and it depends whether, it depends whether the sewer can go here, or whether it has to go up here, back here and down, you know, there's a lot of. There's a lot of we don't know yet.
Three and twenty-two point five, yeah, that's probably, because there's a lot we do know now, but we didn't know.
Well, at least you know the process, you know, there's, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts on this one.
Sure, it'll look better.
Three dogs, progress.
It, see, it does, that tells well.
Yeah.
You uh.
Which?
Yeah, four hundred and forty meters. To go from Rockland Road through the property we proposed, ninety and come down to McLean Avenue. Not following, so following the water line and then the sewer, the water not going towards, yes, so that's.
Four hundred what?
Four hundred and forty meter.
So what are you looking at per meter?
Memory.
Off ballpark.
Uh, but it doesn't need to, um, so. Memory surfing rates, two hundred and fifty a meter for water, and I can't remember if that was resurfacing.
Well, fifty dollars per meter.
Yeah.
For water only.
For water only. Um, because we were talking about that when we put the water line into the, in the home, but. And that's not resurfacing, that's just the beginning, it's all under the line, uh. Ledge was more.
But that uh, that there's a seventy-five percent of the funding cover that infrastructure.
Yeah.
What, what would you put in there, four or six inch?
I'd do eight.
Be eight, there.
We, we have the potential of multiple apartments, um, you're, uh, Belt Air is talking forty-two, right?
Oh. Forty, definitely in the first one.
Well, okay, sorry.
At least you haven't got a.
There's, and if the soccer field was to come to fruition and there'd be something there, plus we're looking at issues of water. Uh, or gallons per minute is not uh, sufficient for the complex right now.
Well, I got, next question is, what is the, the water main going down Rockland Road, is that eight or ten inch? Ten going in there. So you.
Uh, it might be eight by there, but it, but yes, we, that's why I, I strongly suggest an eight.
It, there's a, a section of water on Rockland Road, we don't know if it's eight, ten, or six, or four, or two. They had not good idea now.
We're getting there closer, I don't know.
I'm amazed that, I mean, that all that went in to, for the water tower, and there's no record of what's in there. In the town, all we're.
Any further question on the height of the floor?
I'll go to close session.
Second.
Second to move to close session, all those in favor?
Aye.